We call the Board of Education meeting for order. And, uh, we have someone to help us. I'd like to see who from George Matthews Elementary School. Right. Somebody's gotta be ready. There you go. It's up. It'll be great. Hey, all right, right here ladies. And then we're gonna look right there at that flag. Okay, you can help us? Go ahead and start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now, is there some explanation on why these Georgia Matthews students?
I, we, we use student council and I'm their student council advisor this year and I sent it home to twelve kids, three from each class, who showed up to meetings and who participate and who actively are just there and these were the ones that signed up to go.
Okay, we'd like to have a picture with them so we slide around the board. We'll be so kind. Where's the boys? We have the photographer in place.
In the back.
The boys. The boys are the responsible ones.
Okay, see the photographer over there? Okay, ready? One, two, three. I'm done. One more, one more. Oh, sorry. Right in front.
Thank you.
Ready? So, student council, if you would come start on that end and wait for us to get back to everyone who wants to take your name.
It's up there here. Go all the way, shake everybody's hand.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you for coming and helping us out. Thanks for coming. Thank you so much for coming. Thanks for helping us. Thanks so much for coming.
Thank you for putting that together.
Thank you for coming so much.
Thanks.
It was great to see you.
That takes a lot. Thank you, that was wonderful. I don't believe we have a building report for this evening so I think we're, we're into approval of the interim commander.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the agenda with the following amendments. One, additional certified and classified personnel actions for consideration, item number E dash three. And two, add item number J dash two, executive session to discuss personnel matters for non-eligible personnel.
Very good. You have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Ten seconds. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Marco, same side. Motion passed. Okay. Any correspondence? Okay. I think we're ready for consent agenda, is that correct? Okay, well, I guess we'll entertain a motion for consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda items as follows. Item one through five D.
Okay. We have a motion, who deserves second?
Second.
Okay, one second. Motion second, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, raise your left hand. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. What a man.
Okay, motion passed. Again, I think we are ready now for discussion items. Item F, curriculum reports, summer programs.
Glenn, Glenn and I are gonna do just a brief overview of some of the summer programs. Um, this is, I'm sure we're missing something but we just wanted to give you an idea. Primarily, these are funded, um, through federal or state programs. So, as I talk about some of these programs, some of which are title or at-risk funding and as you see throughout the year, some of those funds are decreasing. Um, that at some point could affect these programs but that's kind of our topic for tonight. First one is Kansas reading roadmaps. Um, you had that full presentation a few weeks ago on, um, what that pro- program consists of but that also is a summer program funded through the KRR grant. It serves the same five schools, um, that it serves in the fall but they do allow kids from other buildings to attend if they have openings. Those buildings get first shot. So, AP, Burt, Buffalo Jones, Florence Wilson, Gertrude Walker and VO are the five buildings. Twenty-five teachers are employed, multiple paras and on average about two-hundred-and-sixty-five students per summer program and that's for the month of June, Monday through Thursday, um, eight-thirty to one-thirty. And it's done in forty-minute blocks. They have a reading block, a math block that's, um, actually kind of a double math block, um, a STEM block and a helping kids block. And then again snacks and lunch are provided through the program. Yes.
On, on the pay for the teacher's paras, is that what we only pay them?
KRR funds that and they set the price. Yep. Yeah. And it's pretty good.
For extended school year, this is for special education. This is a federal mandate so we don't have any choice on, on this and what it looks like. We have two locations, preschool through fourth grade we have at Garfield and grades five through twelve we utilize the high school location. We have a hundred-and-sixty-seven elementary students signed up this year and fifty-one secondary students. All services are based on their IEP and this is an IEP team decision on whether or not they attend. It isn't just every student that has an IEP gets to go to summer school. It's based on, uh, the things here in the middle, the degree of impairment, the degree of regression. I'm not gonna go through all of these. I put this on here specifically though because this is brand-new this year. Past years, they've had to qualify based on regression only and so this year, um, uh, there was a, there was a lawsuit that came about that said you need to consider more than just regression and, and the family won that lawsuit and so this year the state has added extra things that we need to consider as part of that IEP team, um, on whether or not they go to summer school. Then their IEP goals, everything in their IEP is extended then essentially through the month of June. We have all services, PTOT, speech, academics, life skills, whatever is in their IEP, then those are the services we provide. Our hours are eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. We meet Monday through Thursday through the month of June.
Question, just for clarity.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, since we're using IEP, individual education plans,
Mm-hmm.
Now, those are pretty routine for a variety of students in the district, right? Not just, say, remedial.
Right.
Okay. I want to be sure that it's not a class that we're serving, it's elements within each IEP that qualify.
Right.
We also have the summer feeding program. I know Tracy Johnson has given multiple reports on this but this is a really big federal program. I mean, we service a lot of kids every day at the following locations, all of the schools that have KRR, all of the schools that have, um, the extended school year special education. They do meals on wheels so they go to many community locations like Crazy House, um, parks, the swimming pool, um, and then a lot of community places such as the library, the Mary Street Apartments, Garden City Rec. And in conjunction with, this, it's not the same program but they go to a lot of the same sites as books on the bus and that's been going on for many years. It's, it's really utilized to get students to read. They get free books, they go to, go to Books on the Bus, pick up a free book and then the next week they can exchange it for a different reading book. The migrant summer program, there's kind of two. Um, one supplemental offices, they've been on the phone for weeks. Um, it's offered through Doug Bowline at the State Department, sent out the information but our kids have the opportunity to spend one week at a camp off-site. Um, one of them is at Hutchinson at the Kansas Cosmosphere and they can choose essentially, um, to learn information about space flight or advanced flight. And then the Kansas Association of Math and Sciences takes place at Fort Hays State and, um, they can do some engineering, different types of science and math camps. Again, it's pretty scary for a lot of our kids to go to a camp for a week. I think right now we have twelve secured. This is the first time we've offered to make sure that they have the transportation and such to get there. We don't pay for that again, that's the migrant summer program funding.
Another question I might ask on that. Since it is intimidating, um, how do we, do we accommodate? Do we have the opportunity to accommodate parents or guardians or anything like that?
So, um, the ladies in my office call the parents, bring them in, meet with them, explain the process, how it works, how they get there, um, how they get home and, and just really sit down and talk about the advantages. They also do get a half a credit for attending that so it's kind of a win-win.
Renee, you'll see a twelve in both programs combined or?
No, no, um, in the mi- in this one? Yes, twelve so far signed up for one or the other.
Correct.
Thank you. Migrant summer school is another opportunity that we offer. Um, it used to be just for migrant students, now it's for migrant slash at-risk. It's, it's grant-funded as well through, um, the at-risk grant and money that we get as well as migrant monies. Started out with one para and it was almost kind of like a, um, oh, what word did I say? An independent study group and that has just blossomed into, they offer, I don't know, when to put, eight courses, nine courses, like English, three or four government classes that are migrant kids. Sometimes they come in and out and they're just a class or two behind. It's face-to-face seat time and so they can only have an opportunity to complete one class during migrant summer school but, um, last year we had eighty-two students that took advantage of that. That isn't all. Now, these are not, um, these are just offered because people have an interest in offering them. We don't fund these but for example robotics camp, um, the Dravinsky's put that on every summer. We provide the building, um, and the resources for that but we have extracurricular camps, we have workout weights. A lot of our students take dual credit courses in the summer through Garden City Community College. Internships, for example, Plant Hills offers that. Semester school credit recovery. A lot of students enroll in the virtual academy to earn credits over the summer and JROTC never quits all year long. So, um, there are opportunities for a lot of kids to do different things, uh, in our schools all summer.
Renee, what would be an example of an extracurricular camp?
Um, band camp, um, football, we'll have, um, any kind of an extracurricular activity will offer, often offer summer opportunities. Any questions? No action, we just wanted to give you some information about the different things that our kids in and staff are involved in over the summer.
Any questions, Ford?
We'll be all know if the funding's there for them to do that.
We're secure for this summer uh, but those migrant and at-risk funds continue to diminish every year. So, I know we applied for other grounds like Janie just applied for another one that's about twenty thousand. No clue we'll get it but we'll put it into things like that.
All right. Thank you for that. That's very timely as we continue to think about, um, budgeting various things. Let's see. I think we're, to finish up with item F on curriculum reports, uh, student drug, alcohol and tobacco policy. Who's presenting that?
I guess I'm starting.
Okay. By the way, to the board.
Thank you. Um, sometime in October, we were asked to come back together as secondary administrators. Any ready posters? That's Steve's.
Okay.
We changed a little bit. Um, and because we saw a new, um, there was a new trend happening at the high school and then slowly filtering down to the other, um, grade levels which is called jeweling. In the packet, you have a picture of what a jewel looks like. We don't actually have one because the police take them when we do get them. Um, it's becoming really popular in the last two years with kids. They're easy to conceal, as you can see in the picture. They're kind of small, they look like a USB drive. They're approximately a half an inch wide and, um, between three and a half and four inches long. So, you can hide them in your hand, um, right now. I'm gonna give you guys something to look at. It do have what they call a liquid pot or the E liquid. If you take the old cap off, you can smell it. But that's what they look like, the juice, they, they call them a juice box. They put them in the end of the E cigarette so that they can smoke them. Each of the jewels that you see there have about two-hundred puffs. That box you're holding covered, contains the liquid of, equivalent to one pack of cigarettes. They can put other things in there. Um, we don't know what's actually in the liquid box other than flavoring. That one happens to be butterscotch or caramel, I'm not sure which. The other chemicals depend on the manufacturer of the juice box. Um, some of them even contain formaldehyde, is that the right word? So, you don't know but they can also put THC in those now. So, depending on what state you live in, they're becoming, they're getting a little bit more dangerous. Um, you do have to be twenty-one to purchase it but I don't think that that's really been a problem talking with the high school. They can get them pretty much anywhere, you can order them online and they're not really checking ages. They ask, are you old enough? And most kids are really good at saying, yes, I am. Um, so that's usually all it takes. Um, at this time, the company's Jewel, which is the one you can see in the picture here, they've interviewed them several times, are you designing this for kids? And they say absolutely not. It's to help people stop smoking yet there's three thousand flavors, uh, in those juice boxes. And the most common ones are cotton candy, bubble gum, cherry, grape, orange. So, you figure out, are they really not sending them towards kids? Because the flavors are all for kids. So, that's what he brought up about, let Steve's can talk about.
Yeah. In September or so, around September, Dr. Carlin called all five twelve administrators together and he kind of inserviced a little bit about, uh, the trends that we're seeing across the nation and across the state with teen drug, alcohol, tobacco use, particularly the trend in jeweling. Uh, and he shared with us some information from KASB just about, uh, an in-service that he had gone to and he shared us, shared with us that information and we talked a little bit about the trends and what we were seeing in the schools. And at that time, if you remember, the Surgeon General declared it a public health emergency and there was a lot of stuff coming out from the Center for Disease Control about, about the issue and, and, uh, the increase among teen use, as Janet said, because, you know, blueberry is a popular flavor and things like that and, and it's easy for kids to get really hooked on it. Um, so we talked a lot about what we were seeing in our schools. We also talked about how we were going to try to address the situation in our schools, uh, within current board policy, you, concerning drug, alcohol and tobacco within school grounds and at school activities. And we decided to also try to promote awareness among all stakeholders, parents, kids, community members using the tools that we have available. Buffalo Broadcasting System, the Sugar Beat, uh, Twitter, social, all the social media sites. Um, also trying to deliver physical handouts to everyone who came and attended the parent-teacher conferences in the fall. We had, uh, meetings with all of our activities, uh, in the fall. Sports and, uh, band choir, orchestra, theater, talking to kids and to parents about, about this issue and also then about how the school would be addressing this issue if there were any concerns. As I said, we met to develop some consistency and try to make sure that we were approaching it similarly grades five, twelve. And also, we met to talk about an intervention component because an intervention component is part of the board policy and we decided that intervention should be with the counselor, the principal, parents, but also with a research-based, uh, intervention program through the twenty-fifth judicial, judicial circuit, their teen intervene program. That's what they do, it's what they're good at doing as far as providing some intervention program. We currently have that as our intervention program for students who are a part of, who violate the policy on school grounds or on school activities. We use teen intervene and then if they violate a second time, now we have a, the component where the parent's required to attend along with the student if they have to go through the class the second time. We've kind of added that as an extra component to try to get the family involved a little bit in some of this intervention. And also, we are currently providing, uh, a resource packet to those that have, uh, violation on this so if they're interested in trying to find where there's extra help available beyond what the school can provide as far as drug, alcohol and tobacco counseling, we, we try to give some of that now. I'll let Matt talk about the policy itself.
So, you guys all have the policy in front of you, I believe, right? Uh, I'm just gonna highlight some of the areas that believe need to be talked about. Uh, just to note, I will discuss, the things I'm discussing are involved if, if it's caught on school grounds. Um, Drew's gonna go over, uh, consequences for students that are caught off school grounds, additional with like, uh, involved with activities, uh, things like that. So, going to JCDAB, um, just basically the alcohol, tobacco and drug use. Uh, the consumption and or possession of any alcoholic beverage by students is prohibited in any attended center on school grounds or at any school-sponsored activities. Um, smoking by students and the possession, uh, and use of any tobacco product is prohibited, um, at any, uh, any, any school or activity that's sponsored by school. Uh, the unlawful possession, use, sell and distribution of illicit drugs, tobacco, alcohol by students on school premises, premises or as a part of any school activities prohibited. And this policy is required by the nineteen-eighty-nine amendments to the Drug-Free Schools and Communities Act. So, um, coming down here to the philosophy. Um, you know, all students are, have the right to attend a school in an environment conducive to learning and we just believe that a student cannot learn to his or full potential while under the influence of drugs and they may also be entering that right from others, you know, if they're under the influence. Prevention through education. Um, this is one thing that we have in here. It's not all, we don't want it to all be all about consequences. We also want to provide that student help and educate them on, on the, you know, drugs, alcohol and stuff, how it can be harmful. Uh, program procedures we have with that. Number one, utilization of community resources, which is law enforcement, rehabilitation, treatment centers, regional prevention centers, school, community prevention activities. Um, two, uh, staff will be trained in prevention strategies and will be able to assist with substance abuse prevention program and that's mainly, we know, we, most of our counselors are the staff that are available with that. Flip over to the backside. Three is the intervention team will be organized to assume primary responsibilities for a substance abuse program and implement procedure in each school, which we've kind of all talked, it's, you know, the intervention team is pretty much our principals and counselors with it. Four, educational programs or materials presented to, to parents annually as designated by the school principal, which we have handouts, um, you know, pamphlets or whatnot to community resources that we provide students that, um, might need that help or recommend that help for them. Five, peer leadership training is to be encouraged, um, which, you know, we, high school's really big at that. They have, uh, students that are out there doing things to promote and, and inform students of what's going on. They've also been down to our schools, into the middle schools and intermediate centers to help provide education to those students through their students, which I thought was a big help. Um, then six, curriculum, uh, development should be, or should include an intra-, interdisciplinary approach regarding counseling, health, physical education, science, home economics and other district adopted programs, which, um, each school kind of has their own different way of doing it. Um, I, you know, I think high school has, uh, P, health class out there that covers a lot of this. I know middle schools do that a little bit. Um, I know our science teachers also take a day and include it into science where they, um, you know, show them that, hey, this is what the, what drugs and alcohol, tobacco can do to your body. So, I mean, each school kind of has their own different way of doing that. Um, just going down, inappropriate uses and consequences, kind of already discussed that. Uh, but it does sound here, number one, improper use of illegal drugs is fine. I wanted to point out prescription drugs used by someone other than the person whom it is prescribed for or in dosage other than the dosage, um, written on the prescription label is not, not allowed, considered improper use of it. Um, consequences for such behavior is, is what follows and this is what we, number one right there, basically states that any, any staff member that witnesses a use or improper use or any of that is reported immediately to the principal. Uh, two, uh, we will notify, uh, law enforcement since it is illegal for any student to be in possession or consumption of any of, any of the drugs, alcohol or tobacco. Um, three, all certain seizure actions will be taken in accordance with the guidelines set forth in board policy. Um, four, basically just states that in case of an emergency we will contact, um, parents or the person designated for that student or is in their marked emergency contact list. Uh, five, students that are concerned about their substance abuse and notify faculty and staff will not be subject to suspension. So, I think that's something to note there. Uh, six, consequences for first, second and third offenses within the same school year. Um, so we'll go over that right now. First offense, so it says a first-time violator shall be subject to the following sanctions. Uh, they could be suspended from zero to three days of school. Um, it may be referred to a long-term hearing. Suspension from all student activities for a period of not less than one month. Uh, intervention by intervention team will begin and recommendations will be made. Uh, parents and guardians will be informed of suspension and the recommendation of the intervention, intervention team. Further, second offense, uh, the student will be suspended from three to five days, can also be, um, recommended for a long-term hearing. Uh, suspension from that student activities for a period of not less than one semester or four months and, um, the state, the student placed on long-term suspension under this policy, uh, they could be re-admitted, um, you know, on probation status if the student agrees to complete a drug or alcohol program. And, um, additional intervention will be conducted by the intervention team and again, the, the parents and guardians will be required to attend a staffing with the intervention team at that time for their second offense. The third offense, um, student who gets their third offense a punishment, um, including expulsion from school for a period of not exceeding a hundred-and-eighty-six days, uh, suspension from participation and attendance of all at school activities for a year. And, um, the student who's expelled, again, uh, they could come back on probationary terms if they agree to the treatment and programs. So, you guys go to the next page. Just to kind of wrap it all up, um, the substance, substance abuse intervention. So, again, uh, area where we try to get the kids, the person help or whatnot if they're involved with it. Uh, just states, you know, when a student exhibits behaviors that may indicate the illegal juice or, or illegal use of any illegal drug, alcoholic beverages, uh, drugs or controlled substances, the school will document such behaviors, confront the student and his, his or her lawful custodians with documented evidence and recommend. So, A, we, we had a, the student and lawful custodians enter a contract, uh, with the school to modify inappropriate behaviors. Uh, B, the student, uh, be considered for enrollment in a diversion program in lieu of consideration for formal treatment. And C, the student may or be taken in for intake, evaluation or assessment by qualified alcohol, drug or, drug and treatment agency. So, again, we just want to provide outside resources to get that student help and recommend, um, you know, that they, so they have those opportunities, so.
What Mr. Byer talked about was if they get caught in school or on school premises or during school events. Um, my piece of it is what happens when they get caught outside of school, if they get arrested for something, um, if they're at a party and, and there's evidence of, of something happening, those, on those lines of things in dealing with activities. The first time that they're caught in season um, is a loss of twenty percent of their season, which for most teams, that's ten games or less, so that's two events. Uh, for teams that have twenty games or more, that's four events. So, the first time is just loss of twenty percent of their season. The second time is loss of, uh, suspension from all activities for two weeks and then what we've done in the past is we've done forty percent of the season. We've just doubled that. Uh, and then the third time, they're off the, off the teams for a calendar year. Uh, again, the big thing, the big difference between Matt's, what Matt was talking about in the board policy and our activities policy is activities are when they're caught specifically outside of school time. Um, Matt's is more- Matt's is more specific to school time, school events, on a bus, at a dance, whatever those may be.
Lucas and I are going to talk about the data, so you should have a sheet in front of you that gives you some numbers. It's broken down by school and by semester. So across the top, you have the two intermediate schools, Bernadine Sitz and Charles Stones. The way the numbers are written, the first number is the number of incidents. And then the second number in that cell is the number of students that were involved. So for example, Charles Stones, under alcohol, first semester, you see one dash three. So one incident that involved three students getting a referral for alcohol. At the intermediate school, all of the numbers that you see going across are all first offenses. No one has gone up to that second or third offense. You want to talk about the middle schools a little bit?
So at Horace Good and KH, you can see that first semester, as far as drugs, there were three different incidents involving four kids at Horace Good, two tobacco involving five kids. And then at Kenneth Henderson, the drugs were in first semester, there were three incidents involving six kids, so. And then one incident of tobacco involving two kids. So obviously, most incidences are involving more than one kid in these type of instances. And then second semester, the Horace Good has had two incidents involving four kids with drug-related referrals. Kenneth Henderson's had two incidents with six children involved. And then Horace Good and the tobacco in second semester, we've had four incidents with seven kids. And we've just tried to continue to educate our kids. One thing that we just had at the middle school level, the peak performance athletes from the high school just presented to our seventh and our eighth graders that happened here in the last week. So that continual education is important. Yes?
My question was, so you have, so each time on these three, you have three incidents of drug use. There were six kids involved each time?
No, six total kids. So it might have been, I mean, I'm not sure on the specifics, but it might have been one time with five or four kids and then one time with one kid. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
On the involvement, just for clarity, if you have six kids involved, what determines whether they're involved?
So possession, use, or giving to others, distribute. I mean, that's how kind of I look at it. I don't know how everybody else, but that's kind of how I go about looking at those type of things, so. Yep.
Then if you look at the alternate school and the virtual, they've had just a couple incidents. Those were all first offenses. Garden City High School, their numbers are written in here a little differently. You won't see the hash in between to separate those. What we have here are just the number of students that were involved in an incident. Because of the sheer size, it's impossible to pull the data from Skyward that says this was a group incident. It just lists all of the students. So it's easier at the smaller schools because they know, oh, this incident involved three students, so. And they can tell us that. So Skyward won't let us pull that as a group incident. So what we have here is there was one incident that involves three students with alcohol first semester, twenty-one drug referrals, sixty tobacco referrals. Second semester so far, fourteen drug referrals and eleven tobacco referrals. What I noticed when I looked at this data is there were eighty-four total first semester referrals, and that is down to twenty-five second semester. So I do believe some of the things that Steve talked about earlier with their intervention, talking to the kids, bringing the peak performance into, into action, has really made a difference in the second semester data that we're seeing. At Garden City High School, in those, there were eighty-eight first offenses, fifteen second offenses, and six third offenses total for the year. So is what Matt talked about in the different levels. Those are how many they've had at each level.
Do we track what type of drug that is being used?
Most of them were marijuana. When we talked about it as a group, the majority was marijuana for drugs.
Skyward will track marijuana or drugs of?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. If it was an opioid or a pill or something, there's no entry in Skyward for that specifically. There is for marijuana, but I don't know. We, we just track it as drug other. Yeah, ours involve in marijuana and/or the edibles is the marijuana edibles that we're seeing, so.
Can you tell me the months of, what are the months of the first semester, August through December?
Yes, sir.
And then the second is January through May?
And we ran this through, we ran this data on April first.
Is there a way to modify Skyward to be able to include a way to start, especially with the opioid, I don't think that word, issues that we're having and seeing? Is there a way for us to be able to start tracking that specifically?
The state sets up the codes for Skyward, so I anticipate some changes in codes based on opioid use, but we can document that in comments, which typically we do.
Right, but it's not searchable?
Well, easily searchable. It's not easily searchable, but it is searchable, but it's not as easily searchable, correct?
Okay.
Another question, Lauren? Okay, go ahead.
Going back to the first offense, second offense. So explain to me, how does a person decide to get zero or three days on the first offense? I mean, what, if I have that little, little deal that you passed out, do I automatically get zero? Or do I get one day, and then the next guy comes and he has the same thing, and you're not in a very good mood, so you say, I want to give him three days? What, what, how do you judge that?
Those are minimum consequences. So when we had our big powwow in the fall, we determined grade seven through twelve was going to be three. And intermediate centers had a little more flexibility because they're fifth graders. And often they're taking these from their parents or a bigger brother or sister, and they had a little more flexibility. I think they always went with one for sure, if I'm correct there. But seven through twelve, we decided to be consistent and go with three. Now, they always have due process and some extenuating circumstances, but to try to be consistent, it was three.
And then the second offense is five days for seven through twelve?
Correct.
And, another question. Because I'm kind of confused on the athletic part of it. So if I, if I get the suspension in school and I play football, is those penalties go against me? Or is that only if I get caught outside of school?
So the board policy supersedes anything the athletic policy has in place. Your guys' policy is the one that we go with. So the first time the, the student gets in trouble with this, they're, they'll sit for that one month, okay? So they can't play any games, any activities for one month. The second time, the four months supersedes anything that my policy says, our policy, as an, as an activities athletic department.
And does it show?
Can I ask a clarify question at where we're at? This is, this is not Acacia stuff. This is.
No, this is, yeah, this is specific to USD four fifty-seven.
Thank you.
Yep.